Good evening and welcome to the regular school committee meeting of Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have just adjourned out of an executive session and our regular meeting is about to begin. I'd like to start as we do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, to begin the meeting, we have the reading of the mission statement. It is the vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Offering up any member of the public who'd like to have an opportunity to speak to the school committee tonight during our public comment session. Any member of the public either here in the studio or joining us via Zoom? Seeing none, we will move to the next part of the agenda. Next part of the agenda is our student advisory council. Student advisory members, so who do we have tonight? Since this is sort of a new school committee meeting with new members in a new sort of school committee gear, you ladies could introduce yourselves and the roles that you play, the year you're in, and give us a little snippet and let us hear your update. Welcome.
Hi, it's nice to see you all. I'm Isabella Bercham. I'm currently a junior at Wakefield High School, and this is my first year on school.
Hi, I'm Sophia Callahan. I'm a senior, and this is my second year as the school committee representative.
Great, and welcome, ladies. Do you have an update for us, things that are happening at Wakefield Memorial High School?
Yes, so I'm going to start with academics and move on to athletics, and Sophia is going to cover other school news. So for academics, AP exams started yesterday and will take place over the course of the next two weeks. And at Math MCAS for grade 10 will take place on 517 and 518. Administration will be sharing out a detailed schedule soon. And for athletics, visual and performing arts, and extracurriculars, we'd like to congratulate Senior Bradley Diaz and Coach Reynoso for an honorable mention in The Boston Globe. And The Wizard of Oz opens this Friday at the Galvin Auditorium and runs this weekend and next. Go to wakefieldtheater.org to order tickets before they sell out. And I can take it from there. So for some other school news, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we'd like to thank all of the amazing teachers at the high school for everything they do for us. And also, this Thursday, all students at the high school will participate in Day of Unity to bring our school community together to think more about sharing a message of peace, unity, and acceptance rather than fear and hate. And we will have a speaker, Ken Nawadki Jr., and speak to the student body about unity in our schools. And students are asked to wear blue as that is a common color for representing unity. And that's all we have for tonight.
Are there any questions for the student advisors? And seeing none, great. Thank you, ladies, very much, and good luck with the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
One thing I'd like to mention on behalf of the committee and on behalf of the school district, some sad news that we know from within the Wakefield Public Schools, within the town of Wakefield. We had a passing recently of one of the paraprofessionals at the Woodville School. I'd like to, in a moment, call for a moment of silence and observation and recognition of her passing. But at a meeting last night for Unit C members, Denise Adetono, who's the president of Unit C, had a very kind and very brief statement to make, which we have asked Denise if we could share here tonight. So I'd like to read that into the record and recognition of the passing. Nancy Milnes was an amazing, kind, thoughtful, southern-charmed woman who worked at the Woodville School for six years in kindergarten classes. She had a gentle, loving way with her students and was a friend to all of the Woodville staff and parents. She will be dearly missed. If I may ask for a moment of silence in recognition of the passing of Milnes. And thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Agenda item number eight is a welcome to new school committee members. We have two new members who are joining us since the election last week. I'd like to welcome Eileen Collarin and Kevin Fontanella. Congratulations in the election and welcome to the Wakefield School Committee.
Thank you very much.
Anything that you would like to say?
I'm glad the campaign's over. I apologize, I'm much better dressed right now than the last time I was in this room. So I apologize for that, to the town, but thank you very much. I'm very excited to serve. Thank you.
Great.
Very excited. Let's get to work.
Wonderful. Excellent. One thing I'd like to throw a couple of things under comments and updates. One thing which was not a known agenda item at the time, but a request came in from our friend Bob Burnett, who would like to speak to the committee and bring us a couple pieces of news. Bob is joining us via Zoom. Hello, Bob, good evening.
Hey, Tom, thank you. Well, I just want to give you an update, kind of on what's been going on since the last time you saw me here, except I was in person. The Megan Burnett Field has been, the town, DPW's been doing a great job with it, and we have done a few, made a few improvements along the way. We've got the yellow fence guard that was installed. We, the foundation purchased it and the high school team, varsity team, installed it. And they made quick work of it. There were a couple of things that we were looking at, and I just wanted to sort of make you aware of it so that at some point in the future, we may be talking about it again and asking for your permission to go ahead with. There are a couple of bullpen areas behind the dugouts, and they were never quite completed, and they're kind of uneven and not the best condition for people to be warming up. And it could lead to injuries and sort of things. I don't want to use the word "not safe" because they can be used, but they're just, they could be improved as well. So that's something I'm looking into. I've been talking with SMMA, I used to work at SMMA, so you did a good job picking the architect for the school. And I've been in touch with the civil engineer there, and I'm going to be going over some possible ideas for ways that we can maybe improve some of the conditions that are less than ideal like that. And another one was the bullpen enclosures. We were going to try to slide them down towards the backstop a little bit more. If you have the, it wasn't a handout. I went in person, I wouldn't have given you a handout, but it's a, I printed something off and I emailed it to Doug. I don't know if everybody got a copy or not, but I go into more detail on each of the things. And the main reason I'm talking to you tonight is that when we had originally presented the idea of the field, it was suggested, people in the school committee were asking about, well, we're going to put a sign up there that says something about the Megan Burnett Foundation or anything like that. And I said, well, you know, maybe in the future. I hadn't really thought about that yet. Well, I've had time to think about it, and so I would like to put a sign up, add something to the scoreboard. We're thinking of something that basically would go underneath the scoreboard, just a, you know, maybe a 10-inch-high thing. It wouldn't be as high as the letters that say Wakefield Warriors. It'd be something more subtle, just as, you know, Megan Burnett Foundation. Just sort of, we have a presence there. I mean, you know, the savings bank has their name on everything that they, you know, that they're involved with, so I figured, why not? So that was one thing. I was looking for your approval for us to go ahead with that. And then there was something I wanted to mention. I didn't know if you were aware of it or not, but we had plaques made up for Megan and Marty Blatts that could be installed at the field, you know, permanently, so that everybody who goes there can know something about the people who, you know, the field was named for. And at the time that I was doing it, I spoke with someone at the town council, and she said, you probably don't want to do anything about installing them permanently yet until we know where the high school is going to go and how that design, you know, how would be best to locate that stuff. So again, that's something else. I'm talking to SMMA about it, get some ideas from them, and I would, you know, when we come up with something that seems like a good idea, you know, come back and float it by you guys and see if you agree. And let's see, there was, oh, and then there was one other, there were two other things. One other thing I was going to, I was asking about, you know, asking your ideas for, is I had seen it, we were at a college game a couple of weeks ago, and I saw that behind the dugout, they had racks or like hooks up at the roof where you could hang racks and brooms and jeffles, things like that, that you use for, in the field. And I was, wanted to ask if it was okay if we did something like that, if it was okay with the school committee if we did something like that. I wanted to make sure that you were okay with it before I started talking with the DPW and see, you know, see if they agree. So that was another item. And then the last thing was, I found out that, as I've been looking into field maintenance and that sort of thing, I've seen that laser grading is something that they say, you know, should be done on a softball field every year if you can afford it. And if you can't afford it, that it's something that should be done as regularly as you can afford it, like if it's every couple of years or every five years or whatever, just so that the surface is more maintainable and doesn't get too far down the road with divots and three-dimensional stuff that, you know, that you don't want. So that's something I've talked to a contractor who built the field, and he was very informative, but I wasn't able to get a quote from him. And what I'm thinking is that it's probably because he works with the town, and he probably wants to talk to somebody from the town. So I'll be talking to Dennis about that, and I'll go, you know, with the DPW. But I just wanted to let you know that was, you know, something else that we're looking into. Anything at all that we're looking into that's on school property, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of. So that's basically, that's basically it. Again, like, it was just, I just wanted to check and see if it was okay. And sign to the scoreboard that says the Megan Burnett Foundation. In other words, I'm all set, and thank you very much for listening.
Well, Bob, thank you, as always. It's great to see you again, and thank you so much, obviously, for the heart and soul that you put into this work. And it's so meaningful to our student athletes, especially our female athletes, so thank you so much for that and for giving us these updates and suggestions.
Oh, Tom, you just, you just said something that reminded me of something, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, because I know the school committee has changed a little bit, besides Eileen and Kevin, congratulations, that it's not necessarily entirely the same as when we first started. But the field being named after a woman, Megan, is, it's the only field, only women's softball field in the Middle Sex League is named for a woman in the play.
Interesting. Right, yeah, that's wonderful. Any member of the committee have a question or a comment for Bob?
No, thanks, Bob. Wonderful work you do.
Great. So for those items, thanks for keeping us informed. I don't, unless the superintendent has something to add or we want to maybe bring this up at the facilities meeting in case and provide some feedback to you that way, but certainly the type of things that you're thinking about make perfect sense and would seem like terrific add-ons, but Doug?
I think everything that Bob has done has been done professionally. It's well-thought-out, you know, if you listen to him talk about the improvements that he's making, I, you know, I think we should support these 100%. You know, his question, which was the primary question, and with Bob, he's always looking to the future. He always has another iron in the fire. But his question for this evening was really about the sign. Would we support the sign? And I think, you know, I think we should do that and really say a special thanks to Bob and all the work that he's done in really creating an amazing space for female athletes.
So do we need a motion?
Sure, if you'd like to compose one, we don't have one ready. We could certainly do a consensus, but motion's always in order.
Can I make a motion to allow the Megan Burnett Foundation to add signage to the scoreboard at the Megan Burnett?
Blatts.
Blatts Field. Field. In accordance with their foundation name.
Second.
Right, made and seconded. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Bob, again, thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you again. And let us know if we can actually help as opposed to just, you know, do a ringing endorsement for your work and the foundation's work.
Well, thank you, but I just want to thank you all for doing what you do anyways. It's a, you, you're kind of like umpires in that when you're doing your job, no, no, seriously, when you're doing your job well, nobody says anything. But you make one mistake and everybody's all over you, you know? So anyways, thank you very much.
I don't know that that happens, Bob, but thanks for, you know, thanks for bringing that up.
So Bob, I'm wondering if we could use the field. Maybe town council has been ducking us for a while.
Good point.
And, but we have someone in our audience tonight that might be able to confirm that there could be a contest between.
Bring it on, bring it on.
Softball game, town council, school committee softball game?
Steve Mayo says he can hit it up.
Out of where?
I'm just saying.
Out of a telephone.
He wasn't clear on that. I just listened. Parkalot?
The Enfield?
Thank you so much, Bob.
Again, thanks so much, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and great to see you again. Thanks so much.
Yeah, great to see you too. Thanks very much.
Okay, taking things slightly out of order because we have a couple guests with us tonight. I'd like to bring an invite to the table, Jen Calley from the Municipal Light Board and Julie Smith-Calvin, the Chair of the Town Council, with an update on green communities and the town's pending energy reduction plan. So this is a follow-up. You were with us in January, maybe, February?
I was saying November.
Yeah, it was before the New Year.
It's been a blur the last couple of months, so, but, okay. But yeah, so this is, this is an update from when you were last with us and the progress that's being made on your side and the type of things that you'd be asking us to consider as far as adopting as policies.
It is an update, but we have some new members here, and it's been five months, so we're going to try to do it justice by explaining a little bit more, just so we don't lose anybody.
And we have Cara Goodman on the phone with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, so.
We just want to verify if we have Cara Goodman on the phone, because I haven't heard.
Oh, good, great, excellent. So I guess I will start. Welcome first to the new school committee members, and of course, we will beat you in softball. Bring it on, as long as I can bring my daughter. But isn't it wonderful to have the Megan Burnett Field at Blatts? So amazing. So we're here tonight to talk about the Green Communities. It is a designation and grant program that, quite frankly, the majority of the 351 municipalities in Massachusetts have already adopted. But like many communities that are served by municipal utilities, we've been a bit late to the game because there were different rules and things that we had to go through. But we are rapidly making progress, thanks in no small part to Jen Calley, who's doing this as a volunteer in addition to her work as a commissioner on our light department. In fact, it's really been a team effort. Jen's been really leading it. We've had amazing technical support from Cara Goodman, who's on the phone from MAPC. We've had representation from the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department staff, the town staff, DPW and engineering. Doug's been on the calls as well as school facilities, communications, economic development, and the Environmental Sustainability Committee. So as you may recall, there were five criteria that allow us to receive this designation, one being adopting as of right citing for renewable energy and alternative energy generation and adopting expedited permitting process. Those were actually already written into our bylaws and zoning, so there was not a lot to do on those. We then had to adopt a efficient fuel, adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy, which you did probably around the time we were here or right around the time that we were here, as did the town council. And although it was not required, I believe, as did the light department. So that's a huge policy that will help guide purchasing vehicles well into the future. And then we had to go to town meeting to adopt the stretch code, which we did very successfully. So the final piece in the five criteria is to create an energy reduction plan to reduce energy use by 20% in the next five years. And that's really, Jen will walk through that. Once we get this designation, the nice thing is we were in a bit of a rush when we were here at the end of last year because we were trying to make the fall deadline. They have now changed the grant program to a rolling basis. So as soon as we are ready to go, we will submit, and we have high hopes. And it will come with $170,000 grant immediately upon acceptance into the program, up to $200,000 annually towards municipal energy conservation measures. And so we'll be working closely with the capital planning committee, with the school facilities, to really look at everything through this new lens in order to reduce our energy usage and hopefully secure some of those grants for things that we need to do anyway. So, what's the next slide? Yeah, and so this is, so this is where we are. I'm going to let you walk through from here. Okay, so this is just an overview. We've been working on this for going on two years, and I'm very hopeful that we are near the end. So Jen's going to go through the nitty-gritty, which is what she does as an energy analyst.
Sure. So in putting this together, we did scoping audits, well, I should say, not myself. A company called GDS went into each of 17 major buildings in Wakefield, municipal buildings, did scoping audits, this was in the fall. And basically identified, you know, measures that could be done over the next five years, opportunities, costs and savings associated with all of those measures. So Cara helped us kind of go through all of that data, there was a lot of it, and get it organized into a plan. The strategy that we proposed for the plan is threefold. First of all, to focus on larger, less efficient buildings. So go for the biggest opportunities out there. Go for buildings that have a lot of opportunity in them for energy improvements and address those in a comprehensive way. And then also to align with the capital planning that's already been developed. So to look at existing town capital improvement plans and try to align with those in terms of the five years. And so what we came up with is basically a focus on five buildings here. So we have town hall, the civic center, the public safety building, Woodville Elementary School, and the high school. And basically, by addressing these five larger buildings in a pretty comprehensive way, we believe we can get to the 20%. This is, this is a slide that's focused on the savings, so I just wanted to give you some of the detail on that. I apologize if this is small, but basically, the buildings run down the left-hand side, starting with the town hall. So this is kind of the rough sequence of events in terms of buildings, how this would unfold over the five years. The first column is the projected savings for each building, if we did the, all of the energy conservation measures that we anticipate. Next is the usage of the building, and then we calculate the savings as a percent of the total usage. You can see in the early years, we're addressing opportunities that are maybe not quite as deep with savings in the range of 5% to 15%. And then by the time we get to Woodville and the high school, we're really doing some really significant work that's around 50% to 60% of the building energy use that we would be reducing. So this is quite significant. I think the one thing you can take away from tonight's presentation, just looking at the numbers, is really in the header, which is that we can get three-quarters of the way to our goal by building a new, highly-efficient high school. So the opportunity there is massive. It's astounding. When we saw it, we were blown away. So it's not insignificant and something that we should definitely be focused on because that's kind of cost savings for the town for the next 20, 40, 60 years into the future by doing that and doing that very well. And then the remainder is through these other opportunities, mostly through Woodville Elementary School in the mid-years. I will note that we're still working on the public safety building numbers. We have a renovation planned, and we're still kind of de-duping what's in the audits with what's already accounted for in the renovation plan. So those numbers are likely to shift a little bit in the coming weeks. On this page, we do a very rough estimate of costs, so I want to acknowledge that this is pretty rough. But basically, what we wanted to show you is kind of the total cost for these measures, but then also mapping that to the grant opportunities that we could have. Again, these are estimates, rough estimates too, for the grants. So I'm not promising that this is exactly the way it's going to happen, but I just wanted to give you a sense for what this could look like over the years. So again, going from top to bottom in terms of the years. Year one, we have three buildings, town hall, the public safety building, and the civic center. The total for those three buildings is around $200,000. So if we get the 170, that's actually a really good amount of money toward the amount of work we could do in those three buildings, leaving very little actually for the town to cover. The Woodville Elementary School is actually a pretty significant project, so that building, built in 2003, is now reaching its 20 to 25 years. At that point in time, a lot of the energy-related equipment comes to end of life. So that's why that's a really good opportunity, because in the next couple of years, heating system, cooling system, all the internal, you know, controls and things like that are kind of up for replacement. So that's almost $2 million project that we hope to be able to split up so we can maximize our use of the grant funding towards that project. And this is work that we would have to do anyway. It's just to get us to do it as good as, you know, in a way that's as good as possible and really dropping our energy use in that building as much as possible.
Jen, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I'm sure you mentioned it last time, it's been a while. Why Woodville and not like, say, Greenwood, an older school? What was the decision factor?
Sure, so, I mean, the two things I think that came into play were the timing of Woodville, again, coming into that 20 to 25 year. But in our discussions, Dulby also came up because that school was constructed around the same time. However, we have already actually addressed some of the energy systems in that building because they've already either, I don't know, whether they failed or they've needed replacement earlier. So those opportunities are already taken off the table. So in some of these facilities, even though they might be 20 to 25 years out, some of the major energy-saving opportunities have already been addressed, whereas Woodville has not.
But let's say Greenwood, obviously a much older school. There would just not be as many opportunities there. Is that fair?
Correct. I can go back and see, I can look into that in more detail. I don't have. I was going to say, I'm looking toward the screen.
If I could chime in for a minute?
Sure.
The reason why we chose that school in particular is because of the need for a new boiler, which is coming to end of life. And we think that's one of the more urgent priorities that we'd like to address with some of the grant funding. But more importantly, the grant program does not end after five years, and you can actually continue getting grant funding past that point as well. So it's most important for us to lay out in this plan what happens in the first few years, but you actually can continue applying for those grants from the Department of Energy Resources every year that you're in the program. So, you know, year six, maybe that would. So, you know, year six, maybe that would be a big one for in the future. We have savings identified or opportunities identified in almost every building in town, but these are the ones that we thought were the most urgent. And notably, that school for the reason of the boiler that we are, folks over there are concerned it might be reaching end of life very soon, and nobody wants to be in that emergency situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Just looking for the screen to come back, but maybe I need to do this to get it turned back.
It's also behind you.
It is? Thank you. Okay, perfect. Are there any other questions on this slide? I can always come back. Perfect. Okay, so we presented these last time. This just showed the energy use by buildings and then the energy efficiency by buildings. So this is, some of these have been updated a little bit, but for the most part, the story is pretty similar. First, we start with just the absolute value of energy use in a given year. So this is fiscal year 2021. This has been updated from last time, which we showed, I think, 2019. So it's updated to a more recent year, but basically highlighted the five buildings that we're talking about here, just to emphasize that we're looking at the larger buildings. You can see really the energy use at the high school being significantly much, much, much higher than any other building in town, including the middle school, which is obviously a much newer building that does play into it. But also, the square footage of the high school is just much bigger as well. You can see the Public Safety Building, the Woodville School, and then the Civic Center. So these are the top 10 energy users. The next page shows the remaining seven. So I just highlighted the Town Hall. And then, you know, these are all on the same scale, so you can see it kind of really going down at that point. But really, for your purpose, the seven schools that we have represent 75% of our town building energy use. So the energy use is really in schools. They're the biggest buildings. They're used a lot, used and loved, so that's where it's at. We have to address schools if we're gonna reduce energy by 20% in our municipal buildings. There's no choice. So this is energy efficiency by building. So this is a measure of the total energy use, but we are normalizing it for square footage, so we're basically dividing by the square footage in each building. So this puts it more on an even playing field, basically. So you're looking truly more at the energy efficiency for each building, but also the usage characteristics come into play as well. For example, if the building is used 24/7, like the Public Safety Building, it will have a higher energy use intensity, or E U I, than other buildings will. So what you see here is exactly to that point. Public Safety is really heavily, heavily used building, lots of equipment in there, so that's a high energy use. But you also see high school, you know, the schools coming up as well as big energy uses. And then Town Hall on the second page. So I just quickly go through, so we have a slide basically for each of the buildings that are in the plan. What we did was to pair along the top, the non-energy improvements, with the energy improvements on the bottom. Those are highlighted with the red square. So Town Hall, we're going in, actually, I believe, pretty soon, doing siding, flooring, ceilings, smoke detectors, electrical panels, things like that. So there's a bunch of improvements already in play. And the audits suggested, in addition to that, doing lighting upgrades, low-flow faucets, and upgrading heating and water heater equipment as well for an energy reduction of about 7% for the building. I can go into a little bit more detail on the cost. So the cost do, may seem low. They do assume some D P W staff for some of the lighting retrofits and things like that. So there are some efficiencies built in to the cost, again, assuming some town contribution of staff to do some of the work. Public Safety Building, we already have a renovation in play. And again, we're looking to just de-duke what's already gonna be done for that and what else may not be captured in that. But what came out of the audit was boilers, chillers, again, lighting, lighting controls. This is the one building where they do recommend some weatherization measures. So on the part of the building that's not getting renovated, there may be an opportunity to do some air sealing in that section of building and low-flow fixtures. So this is a 15% energy reduction. And again, we're still trying to figure out the scale, how big this portion of the project will be. At the Civic Center, they're doing roofing, also some little work on the inside of the buildings in terms of the bathrooms. So again, there's lighting, insulation, weatherization, heat pump, water heater, opportunities inside the building for about a 5% and a 4 or 5% energy reduction. There's also been talk of, after the roof replacement, doing some solar P V on the roof. So that's not necessarily using grant funding, but I just wanted to note that here. This is the Woodville Elementary School, so the focus here really is all energy. There aren't any necessarily non-energy improvements planned at this time, but we do see a lot of the energy equipment coming to end of life, specifically the water heater. And there was a recommendation to really address a lot of those kind of in one big lump amount and kind of do it all at once. So this is the biggest part of this project, at about $2 million, and a pretty significant energy reduction of 45%. This is some interesting facts about the high school. So we gathered some information about the existing building and then the new building, just so you can see the difference. This is what's currently proposed. I know that that project is still moving through design, so it could change. But you can see the square footage here. It's actually quite similar, the existing building and the new building, about 250, 260,000 square feet. Existing building is around an 80 E U I, and there's talk of potentially bringing the new building down to a 30 E U I. That's a very significant change from where we are today, at less than half the energy use. Notably, the existing building, I believe, doesn't have air conditioning, but the new building would. So encompassed in all of that energy use is the addition of comfort, which is a wonderful thing to be having. And then, of course, solar opportunity on the new roof. So next steps in timing, we're really just coming before you, both today and on the 24th of May. We're also coming before the town council with the same presentation a week from now. I'll be presenting this in front of the W G, sorry, W M G L D board in another week. And really, what we're just looking for is feedback, questions, things like that. We can make updates to this, certainly if there's comments, and would absolutely love to hear them, so. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And we hope, if all goes well, that we might be able to submit this in June.
Wonderful. Well, again, thank you both very much for your presentation, as well as, you know, coming back and with the updates and the work that's been done since just last fall is extraordinary. Any comments or questions from the committee? Steven?
Am I correct in thinking that we had a tier-two HVAC work for the Woodville plan that didn't make it into the budget this year? Capital planning. Does this mirror that? Do we know, the work that's being proposed?
I believe that it does. I believe that it does.
Okay. Okay, because that looked familiar.
It does.
Okay. As we plan the high school, one thing that's coming up is we're talking about sort of use cases for it. And I think in conversations, it's been talked about using the building more, sort of in line with what the Galvin, there's a lot more community events that happen at the Galvin now, because it's a new space, it's very welcoming. As we move forward with a new high school, I can envision that sort of, those sort of things happening at the high school. If we use the building sort of more in line with, you know, what you've already presented, would that mean that our efficiencies would sort of go up? Because it would be a more efficient space than sort of even projected now? Would that be in our favor if we use the building more in that sense?
So anecdotally, what's been, what I've seen happen with the Green Communities program is, and Cara can probably speak to this more than I can, is that a lot of the building, municipal buildings, have become more usable and more pleasant to be in, so they're used more. What happens as a result of that is they use slightly more energy use than they were anticipated. But while you might think that's a bad thing, it's actually a good thing that you're getting more utility out of your existing spaces, and you don't have to build additional buildings to be able to do all the great things that now we do in the Civic Center, right, with all the sports and recreation that we didn't necessarily do before. So I think it's a good thing, but yeah, it does result sometimes in additional energy use that you didn't anticipate.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a touch. Funny, too, with large building upgrades like that. I would say the scale of the efficiency that you're getting from this new high school is likely to far outweigh the additional usage happening at the high school. Yeah, that's not something I would worry too much about at this point, though.
Okay.
I had a quick question.
Yeah, Kevin.
Is it pretty, like, when they're building all these new high schools, is it pretty standard, these energy savings? Or like, when we're looking at the different plans, are there like significant energy improvements from one plan to another? Or is it pretty much all of these new high schools are pretty much having the similar energy savings?
I would say it varies, town to town, of course, but it really, we really are starting to see more that the standard is buildings that are, for example, LEED certified, that are highly energy efficient. That's definitely the standard that we want to see towns working towards. The meeting we had with the planners, they indicated this building would likely be LEED Silver certified or possibly a higher level of certification. And that's something we're definitely seeing more and more as towns are planning their buildings. The LEED doesn't go exactly with energy efficiency. It doesn't quite translate apples to oranges, but it just kind of shows that they are thinking about that and that that is very, it's something that they're seeing has been popular in other towns and something we're definitely seeing as a trend as well. And we're always very excited when the towns choose to go that aggressively energy-efficient route. We think that's really the best choice for your future budgets, as well as for the comfort of the school and the students.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Again, thank you both. So is there something specific that you need of us before the submission in June? Endorsement of any kind or any?
Do we need a vote?
We'll need technically a signature from the superintendent, which usually requires a vote of the school committee on the plan. We're in the process of sort of taking all of these data points and putting them into a much longer, more forward-looking document that we can bring towards you, before you the next time that we meet. But this is all kind of the meat of it right here. And then we'll provide some extra information and tables about current energy usage and about other potential future opportunities as well in the full plan. But yes, so we'll want a vote in support of the energy reduction plan at the next meeting.
At our next meeting.
So we'll be back on the 24th.
The 24th.
Yeah, we want to make sure we put this in front of you for the two-week review period. Town council will take it up next Monday.
Okay. So will you be able to provide us with a draft motion to make sure we get what you need, really? Okay, terrific. So we'll see you on the 24th. Great, excellent. All right, thank you all. Thank you both very much.
Thanks for all you do.
Nice to see you again, Cara.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cara.
Okay, next part of the agenda is, speaks to a piece of business left over from our last meeting of the last committee back, seems like a long time ago, but it was probably like two weeks ago. And we had a discussion around the table about revisiting and reaffirming the proclamation of acceptance and openness among our students, excuse me, among all citizens in town. Had included in tonight's packet both the original proclamation from 2018 and the one that was adopted last year in 2021 by the school committee. And what we had sort of, correct me if I'm mistaken all, but what we had said we would do is we would share these proclamations out with the full committee and ask the policy subcommittee to work on a redraft for a 2022 version of this. That we've used, when we've reaffirmed, we've hearkened back to some of the basic principles of the 2018 document, but also added in some things with particular matters around, you know, the day and time. So if that still works for the committee, I would ask that we charge the policy subcommittee with revising a 2022 proclamation to reaffirm our commitment to acceptance and openness among all of our citizens.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
And I'm certainly supportive of the thought of it, but is this something we expect to do every year and just adjust the date? I'm just sort of curious what the protocol will be going forward.
Well, we have. I don't know that we actually have something that says that we're gonna do that. I think it's just happened. Since 2018, we have reaffirmed once a year the principles in the original document. And we've also added whatever, whatever timely, you know, time-sensitive issue or concern may be going on in the committee at the time.
Okay, all right. That's it. Thank you.
I don't know, again, I don't know if we have a policy, but we've done it every year since 2018. So it's probably a good thing to do. And I know we discussed some of the timing around that and Susie had suggested that we may consider doing it with the new committee as opposed to doing it as one of the last acts of the old committee.
Good reminder for all of us.
So, will that, yes, Kevin?
Just real quickly, I think based on some communication from Susie, kind of at the end of her tenure with Benny Wheat, I think Izzy is gonna take kind of the charge on working on some of the language. She had looped in, the town council, so I think it's being kind of crafted and massaged a little bit. And so I envision shortly, we'll have some language from Benny and that I think maybe both committees will be able to take a look at and eventually approve.
Right. Because we know the original document was something that, while originated here at the school committee, was something that was approved ultimately by town council and the Human Rights Commission. So, okay, so that will, we will put that on hold until we hear, until we hear something back. Great, thank you. One thing, if I could, I wanted to add to the agenda, something that, under the comments and updates section. This week is a national week of teacher appreciation. And something that I think may be appropriate for us to consider, at least have a brief discussion on, is to recognize and appreciate the outstanding work of the teachers in the Wakefield Public Schools and to issue those thoughts, to share some thoughts about the outstanding work that our teachers do and to so declare this week as a Teacher Appreciation Week in Wakefield. So without any further ado, I'd like to read a draft proclamation and then open it up for a discussion and a motion. Wakefield Public Schools School Committee, a special proclamation. Whereas education is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas our future depends on providing quality education to all students and helping them to feel a sense of belonging, and whereas teachers serve in partnership with parents, each other, and all staff, student, and volunteers to ensure the appropriate education for all children and prepare students to meet high standards of performance, be lifelong learners, and contribute as world citizens. And whereas, these continue to be challenging times to be a teacher in the history of public education, with the past two years reaching crisis levels for student mental health issues and interrupted academic progress. And whereas, teachers have embraced the challenging and changing times throughout the pandemic, working extra hours supporting students, families, and colleagues during a time when absences and impact to learning and school operations were strongly felt. And whereas, our teachers inspire us all by going beyond teaching to provide social, emotional, extracurricular learning for the whole child, while filling many additional roles for students, such as listeners, trusted adults, coaches, and mentors, and spending many of their own hours preparing lessons and activities and evaluating student progress. And whereas, we recognize, appreciate, and support our teachers in their love of mission to educate the children of our community. Now therefore, we, the members of the Wakefield School Committee and the superintendent, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2 through 6, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Wakefield, Massachusetts. And we urge all students, families, staff, and citizens to join in this special observance. I would make a motion from the chair that we approve the proclamation recognizing Wakefield's outstanding educators and the designation of May 2 through 6, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Amy.
So this is great. What do we do with it once it's signed? Do you like send a copy to the schools? Does it go on a file?
That's something that we should discuss.
Is this something we're gonna do every year?
Certainly post it on the website. We perhaps could issue a press release to the item, to have it maybe printed in its part. Certainly, we would want to share it out, I think, with all staff. Perhaps in the morning, we could, if this passes, ask the superintendent to share this out with, as an all-staff notice. Any other things that come to mind? We want to certainly make sure that the community helps to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week and recognize the outstanding work of our teachers.
There are celebrations ongoing already by all of the teachers.
Yes, there are. Yeah. Yes, there are. Yeah, there are many, many PTOs are, are working on celebrations in schools. Today, I guess, is actually Teacher Appreciation Day within Teacher Appreciation Week. So I know there were a number of things that occurred during the day today. So, and our student, our student advisors recognized, recognized high schools' teachers in tonight's report. So, seeing no other questions, and motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Consent agenda. Would someone be willing to read the consent agenda, the approval of minutes?
Sure. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April 12, 2022 School Committee Meeting, and accept the minutes of the April 14, 2022 School Committee Finance and Facility Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 10. The annual committee reorganization and the election of officers. This is the, the time after each annual election that we reorganize the committee and set the leadership team in, in motion. So I will call for, there are suggested language for the motions on the motion sheet, fairly straightforward, but if someone wanted to substitute language, that's obviously at each member's discretion. So let me open up nominations for the position of school committee chair.
So I'll start nomination, election of the chair. I nominate Tom Markham for the position of school committee chair.
Second.
Okay, I, I accept. Thank you. Other nominations for school committee chair? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Next, nomination for the position of school committee vice chair. Mr. Padron.
Why not? Keep it rolling. Nomination, election of vice chair. I nominate Amy Lehman for the position of school committee vice chair.
Second.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Amy, do you accept?
I accept.
Very good. Any other motions? No, excuse me, nominations for election of vice chair? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. The next two positions are payroll signer and, and warrant signer. Just a very brief description of those. Those are positions that need to work with the business administrator on at least probably bi-weekly, meaning twice a month basis, to go into the office and approve the, the spending documents on the committee's behalf. We appoint two individuals, one to sign payroll, and one to sign really all non-payroll spending. Their warrants are presented. Have an opportunity to meet with Christine and ask questions and concerns on our, on our behalf. And if any questions or concerns are deemed to be, are reportable, it would be your responsibility to bring them back to the full committee after, of course, discussing them with the business administrator and, and the superintendent.
And it could be the same person for both payroll?
It could be the same person.
It currently is.
Currently is.
Yeah. But they are two different positions, and there's two different sets of documents.
Yes.
So we don't want necessarily to become too daunting, but it's also not, not, not rocket science. But there is an expectation around, around that it be done on a timely basis. So nomination for the position of payroll signer.
I'm going to keep it going here.
Mr. Padron, you're on a roll.
Eventually I will nominate somebody.
You're on a roll.
So for the position of payroll signer, I nominate Stephen Ingles for the position of school committee designated payroll signer.
Second.
Second. Mr. Ingles, do you accept?
I do.
Okay. Any other nominations for payroll signer? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Next, nomination for the position of warrant signer. Mr. Padron.
I'm going to run the table. Okay, nomination, election of warrant signer, I nominate Stephen Ingles also for the position of school committee designated warrant signer.
Second.
Second. Mr. Ingles, do you accept?
I do.
All in favor? Okay, very good. Next is the annual appointment, re-nomination and appointment of the school committee clerk. We have a motion. Would anyone like to?
Somebody do that one too?
Yeah.
You're on a roll, Michael. I, I don't want to.
I think we're done. Nomination, election of school committee clerk, I nominate Judy Boutiette for the position of school committee clerk, subject to successful completion and agreement on a revised job description and employment contract.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Okay. Very good. Well, again, thank you. Thank members of the committee for your, for your, your confidence and your vote for chair. I look forward to working not only with the, with the full committee, of course, but with, with Amy as incoming vice chair. So we will reorganize the seating a little bit for our next meeting. So we'll get that, we'll figure all that out. Anyways, just a, a brief thought with regard to the reorg, the next level of reorganization, which are subcommittees. As the committee knows, there are four standing subcommittees. Policy and Communications, Finance and Facilities, Labor Relations, and Student Services. What, what I would like to propose that we, that we do is I will push out an email with a brief blurb of what each of those committees is responsible for doing, and ask that members, within a week or so, no, there's, there's no real hurry, but we don't want to drag it out either. Within a week or so, certainly submit back your, your, your ideas for which committee you may like to serve on. If you'd like to volunteer to be a committee, a subcommittee chair, please make that, please make that noted. I think it's very important that, that members not really be assigned to committees, as, as it is important that you find something that you're interested in and ready to roll up your sleeves on and to get, and get engaged with. That being said, we obviously have to fully form all committees. So if everyone says they want to be on, you know,
Policy.
Policy, then, then, you know, the, the chair position then we'll designate, we'll have to make some appointments from there. So just to say that out loud, so we all appreciate the, you know, the clarity. It's also fairly typical that each member sits on two committees. Whether he or she be a chair or not is not relevant. So, okay, so within, within a handful of days, I'll push out an email about a brief description of the four, and then, then send an email back with what your preferences might be. Steven?
In that same email, could you also mention out the liaison positions that exist, like as in CPAC or HRC or?
I have those right here. That was my next, but no, 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 I, I get, no, you're good. So we have, to Steven's point, we have our liaison roles, that the, to represent the school committee before different, different groups within town. We have a liaison to the HRC, the Human Rights Commission. We have a liaison to the Environmental Sustainability Committee. We have a liaison to the Youth Council. We have a liaison to a CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. So I'll also list those. If anyone would like to volunteer to be one of those liaisons. There aren't seven liaisons, so not everyone gets one of those, but.
And only one is vacant right now. Is that correct? Suzie had the environmental.
Suzie had the environmental sustainability. So, but it would also be common.
She also sort of sat in on Youth Council?
Oh, she did? Okay.
Yeah. And it would also be appropriate to, to, to just turn over, returning things over, or at least the opportunity to do so, if someone really, or if someone wanted to change. Someone said, geez, I've been doing this for couple of years, maybe I'd like to do that. So certainly share your, share your, share your, 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 your thoughts and your ideas. Okay. To our, our new members, specifically for Eileen and, and Kevin, there is a expectation, it's a lawful expectation, actually, required new school committee member training that's run by the Mass Association of School Committees called Charting the Course. I will share with you a, a URL, a link to how one registers for that. And then it's a, it's usually a half-day, three-quarter-day event. Some of them are Zoom, some of them are in-person. But there is an expectation that, that, that be, that that be professional development for every new member. So we'll share, I will share that out. Okay. Moving on. A number, item, item number 11, superintendents' reports and remarks. Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I'd like to take my items out of order. Seems like it's pretty standard fare for me. I'd like to invite to, to the table Andrew Sidroni, Jen Hart, Mr. Robinson, and Catherine Dingra. Do you guys come up, please? Sorry about the wait. We tried again. So they're here this evening to give just an update on, on counseling. We had talked earlier, when Andrew and January here about, and Catherine is here, about having our counselors back to give an update on counseling more frequently, probably three or four times throughout the year. So this is probably the, the second installment of that, that commitment. So I can turn it over to you, Andrew?
All right. Yeah. Thanks so much for having us. I really appreciate it. Congratulations and welcome to the new members. Let me do some quick introductions first. I'm Andrew Sidroni, eighth grade counselor at Galvin and mental health coordinator for the district.
I'm Dave Robinson, director of guidance at the high school.
I'm Catherine Dingra, and I work for the Wakefield Department of Health and Human Services.
And I'm Jen Hart. I am a school psychologist, and I work with the fifth grade at Galvin. Thanks for having us.
Yeah. So we're going to talk a little bit about tonight, about the social, emotional health and mental health supports kind of in the district for our students. So some of you may have heard me say this before, but this year feels more difficult than the previous two years in, in many ways. A lot of our students are presenting as a little more socially and academically immature than in the past. And that is really kind of putting stress on families and faculty as well, and resulting in a high need of social, emotional, and mental health support, right? So that's kind of where we are right now, post COVID. So we're lucky enough to work in a district where social, emotional, learning, and mental health initiatives are very well supported with positions and initiatives, which is what we can talk a little bit about tonight. So at Galvin, Jen and I piloted a chat with a counselor, bimonthly Zoom, as an opportunity to give families in the district, in the town, a drop-in mental health consult, right, Q and A chat feature. We kind of did it every other week. We've got one tomorrow at noon. We scheduled it at noon. We figured it might be beneficial to working families maybe on their lunch break if they want to ask a few questions. But it's been really successful. You know, a lot of the questions had been around transition between levels, elementary to middle, middle to high school, things like that. And our plan is to expand that and going into next year, we would have more predictable meetings, more than twice a month, but also more targeted Zoom calls with levels, right? So we'd have an elementary call, a middle school call, a high school call, that are staffed appropriately, so a family with a question would be able to get, you know, the person that would be the most informative in terms of what they're looking for. So that's been great, you know, at the middle school level. In addition, we've been, we've continued, we've gotten back to post-COVID, our advisory, student advisory at Galvin. So that is a time where our, all of our faculty meet with students on relationship building and, and team building and kind of trusted adult building, right? Which is, you know, proven to be one of the largest preventative factors in terms of mental health issues and substance use issues, is having at least one trusted adult in your life, you know, other than, than your parents, right? So that's something that we've gotten back to at Galvin, which has been great, great to get back to, you know, in-person post-COVID. And lastly, actually, you know, I should mention, it's really nice to get back to the in-person field trips, right? I'm, I'm a big fan of the eighth grade DC trip. I've been working all week on roommate assignments. It's kind of up to my neck in it, but we're getting there. We're almost done. But, you know, those types of things, I think, is it Bourndale that's next week?
Bourndale. I've been, I've been looking at all the cabins this week.
Bourndale's next week. You know, those are the types of things that took a hit big time in COVID, right? And those were really, you know, kind of that, that is what we're getting back to now. So, you know, I anticipate those going really well and, you know, feeling great for the whole community. We've certainly been enjoying our fourth counselor at Galvin, Dory Blyden. Jen's going to talk a little bit, a little later about the addition of fourth counselor and how we've been so lucky to, to utilize that support. We also wanted to share a little bit about the two screenings we recently conducted at Galvin. So we conduct three screenings in Wakefield Public Schools currently. YRBS is an every other year screening. So we're in an off-year right now for YRBS. We also conduct the ESPT screening in seventh grade at Galvin and ninth at the high school, right? And that is a substance use screening. We use the craft tool, which can, a copy of it which can be found on our website, www.wakefieldstudentsupport.com, if you ever want to take a look at it. And got back to it again this year. It is a one-on-one substance use screening conducted by our school counselors, our school psychologists, as well as our nursing department. So this year at Galvin, we screened approximately 257th graders. Three students reported using vapes one or more days in the last year. Two reported using alcohol one or more days in the last year. Zero reported using marijuana products one or more days in the last year. And four reported riding in a car where they thought the driver was under the influence of drugs or alcohol in the last year. So those numbers sound pretty low, right, out of 257th graders, and they are. This was very similar in comparison to previous years, according to our nursing staff. I know the high school numbers were probably a little bit higher. And I know based on my work in the diversion program at the high school, we have seen a bit of an increase in substance use. And Catherine's going to probably talk about that in a little bit. But in terms of the Galvin ESPT screening, there was really successful numbers. We are talking a little, oh, sure.
Sorry. Can you just, when you say an acronym, can you just spell it out so we know what?
Yeah, it is the, it is the.
What's the acronym?
The ESPT acronym is.
Screening for Brief Intervention. Okay. And then, how many total seventh graders are there? I'm trying to think of the percentage that actually took.
At the Galvin, it's actually around 250.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, because I mean, we've got probably close to 1,100 in the school.
Okay.
So each grade is around 250, 260-ish, right around there. Yep.
And what some of those numbers don't share is the, the kind of meaningful conversations that we had with some children. I was part of the screening team, and, and students shared about overdoses in their families and things like that. So they don't, that doesn't show up on this data, but it was very meaningful conversations that took place, assuming that a lot of us will end up talking again with those students. So.
Yeah, it's a one-on-one screening, you know, so I would pull, you know, each of our team members pulled approximately 25 students one by one and sat with them for five to 10 minutes.
I was just trying to fill in.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a, hey, everyone fill out this sheet type of deal. It was a one-on-one conversation we each had. Yeah, that's what, it's, you know, certainly lengthy to, to, to screen, but it's worth it because you get that one-on-one connection. Absolutely. I met a lot of kids that followed up and said hi to me later after, you know, after meeting them through ESPT. So again, the other screening that we did this year was the SOS screening. So that's the Signs of Suicide screening. So this is a screening for the depression and thoughts of suicide, risk of suicide. And we screened that in the eighth grade. We've done it three years or so now at, at the, at the Galvin. We obviously took the COVID years off. Actually, we got it right in before the pandemic hit, actually, in 2020. But we took the, the next year off. So at Galvin, this year, we screened with the counselors, the, the school psychologists, as well as some of the health department, and with also help from the NAN Project, which is a local organization that raises awareness for suicide prevention. So they came in, provided curriculum, support, as well as kind of, you know, supporting us through the day, gave presentations to the students. So at Galvin, again, approximately 215 eighth graders were screened. So speaking back to your number about the number of students, it was a little bit on the low side. We did have some students opt out of the screening, and there were a handful of students that were absent that day, but we did do some follow-up screenings for kids that were absent. Of the original 215 screened that day, 18 students were screened high for risk of thoughts of suicide. All right? So that's about 8%. For those students, we had immediate safety and crisis interventions by the student support team, obvious immediate contact to parents the day of the screening. We did not dismiss students to, you know, the community or to their boss or anything like that, without speaking with the family, coming up with a plan. We also consulted with the Elliott Crisis Team for support for some students that needed it. The good news on that number was there were not many surprises. And what I mean by that is the large majority of that 18 students were students who were already on the radar of the student support team for experience some of these thoughts in their past. So that's always a good thing, right? We run this screening for the kids who are off the radar, who are not on anyone's pulse right now. And that's what, Daniel, that's what we do this for.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Where is that relative to prior years? Do you have a sense?
I do. Yes, absolutely. I do, yes, absolutely. So our last screening pre-COVID was just before the pandemic in the spring of 2020. We had 225 screened, and 23 were high-risk. So that was about 10%. So actually, it's 2% lower than the screening pre-pandemic. Which was, you know, we anticipated, or maybe personally I anticipated, a much higher number post-COVID, but I was really happy with those numbers. So we had nine students, which 4% screened for high risk of depression. And again, those were students, we checked in with them within the next 24 hours, checked in with their family that they screened high in depression, set up a plan. And nine students of those 215 eighth graders reported not having a trusted adult in school or out of school. So again, those were another follow-up students that we followed up with just to check in with them about their lack of reporting a trusted adult. Because again, that's a really huge preventative factor for this population, so. But again, overall, we anticipated a high number coming out of the pandemic. Really happy with the overall data. Not many surprises, which is always a good thing. You know, and again, we attribute all of this to the SEL and mental health work that the district had done, you know, prior to the pandemic, during the pandemic, and currently ongoing with, you know, staffing our department, as well as the initiatives ongoing, as well as the, you know, really incredible support of other local agencies, like the Department of Public Health, right? The NAN Project. You know, we really are very fortunate to have some pretty incredible community partners that help us, you know, do the work that we do. In addition, I should mention, we're looking at an elementary screener to kind of complement the middle and high school screenings. I've been working with Sarah Messian at Walton. She's actually researched a bunch of them recently, and she piloted a small one in the school. But we'll look at rolling out something more formal next year for early intervention screening for elementary-age kids. And lastly, I just, before I pass over Dave, I want to plug tomorrow night, we have the Wakefield Community Mental Health Forum at the Savings Bank Theater at 7:00 PM. And Dr. Wendy Grolnick is speaking on pressured parents and stressed-out kids, which is kind of, goes hand in hand with what we've been reporting in general, kind of, coming out of the pandemic. Thanks so much.
Great.
That's all, Dave.
Thank you. So at the high school, we did the same screenings. So with the ESPT, we did our ninth graders, which we screened 186 ninth graders. As far as the numbers go for our school, we had six reported using vapes on one or more days in the past 12 months. We had 10 report that they had used alcohol one or more days in the past 12 months. And we had four students report that they had used marijuana one or more days in the past 12 months. So again, numbers are low, but anything higher than zero is not a good number, right? So we're still going to continue to target these areas of concern. But another piece about this screening that we liked, I think, is not just the conversations with the students who said, yes, they've done these things, but all the students that hadn't. Majority of the students did not do, or reported themselves as not doing any of these things. So there's conversations that were not just, well, that's a great job, continue that great job of not doing these things, but can you anticipate later on in life when you're going to be confronted or maybe tempted with these things? And so even if they hadn't, they kind of talked through situations where they may be presented with that opportunity in the future, and what would they do in order to prevent that for. So the responses for the SOS screening we had at the high school, the two different levels of risk, the high-risk students that had said that either had suicidal ideation or had an attempt was 13. That's in their lifetime, as far as ever, was the feeling there. So that was 13 students who had said yes to that. And then in the other area was not suicidal ideation, but just high depression numbers, and that was nine. So 13 and nine were our two numbers. David, how would that compare to the prior year? Yeah, so this was the first time, we had SOS ready to go about two weeks after COVID, the end of March. So this is the first time we've done it at the high school. So obviously, moving forward, we'll be able to kind of compare numbers, so. But the NAN Project, who came to be part of that, is amazing. They're, all of their speakers have gone through this themselves, and they share their experiences, which has been amazing to hear them go through it and how they turn things around. At the Galvin, watching them present, and the questions the students asked afterward, they were so engaged, they were so mature about it. And I think even if students didn't come up on these two lists, I think it probably hit home to some kids on that, in our classrooms, that didn't say anything about it, but, you know what I mean, behind the scenes, not just for themselves, but for friends, right? So I think a lot of this kind of stirred up, wait, it's actually something I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to share with an adult if my friend is doing X, Y, and Z. So I think the program's amazing, and I'd like to see them get that into maybe the ninth and 10th grade health classes moving forward, and then maybe even screen more than just one year of the four. I think would be helpful. As far as the high school, we have the addition of an adjustment counselor. So we have Andrea Keough to join Suzanne Burns. Now, we have two adjustment counselors invaluable to the team. They're amazing, and they've really helped kind of support all these increased issues that we've had throughout the pandemic. Between the guidance counselors, the school psychologists, and the adjustment counselors, we, you know, we would be without all of them together. It's an amazing team. So we're really lucky to have, so Suzanne and Andrea, they both do, obviously, the one-on-one support for all the mental health issues, but they're also doing a lot of groups along with the school psychologists. So it may be, it's all peer groups. So there might be anxiety, coping skills, self-esteem. So there's a number of different, there's Warrior Thrive. So there's all these different groups they're starting to create more and more. And it got, you know, slowly off the ground, but I think then as the momentum gets carried on, word of mouth gets out there, and so we're hoping to have those groups be even larger than they are now. So there's the one-on-one, and then there's the group work that they've been doing to support this. Did you have a question?
Yeah, based on your observations, I know you're all working in different age levels. Do you think that the mental health issues have been pretty much evenly applied throughout all the students? Or do you think that, for example, you're seeing more severe mental health issues in fifth and sixth grade, or third and fourth grade, or in high school? Anecdotally, I know what I've seen. But I'm curious, but you have a better, as guidance counselors, you have more, probably better anecdotal.
Really good question. We actually talked about it recently as well.
As a team, we talked about that.
You know, a lot of times, it's year to year, right? It's cohort to cohort, right? Just like, you know, some, maybe the, one year, the ninth grade's got some really good basketball players, and the eighth grade's a little bit lower. Different years struggle more or less with different mental health concerns, right? I remember pre-COVID, there was an eighth grade year where I ran, I would say, four or five emergency crisis evaluations for eighth graders that were seriously considering suicide. This year, I've run zero. So, you know, anecdotally, my eighth grade year, it's going quite well this year, right? I have seen, we talked about it, I personally have seen not an increase in significant mental health concerns, but an increase in mild to moderate mental health concerns. Should consider a lot of peer conflicts, a lot of family issues, a lot of stress and anxiety, some school refusal, that type of, you know, kind of mild, what I would consider mild to moderate social, emotional, mental health concerns. Students feel in general like they are a year or two younger. You know, we have to remind ourselves, and a lot of teachers say it, these eighth graders, oh, God, they're really sixth graders who got their year interrupted, right? That's what they're kind of presenting as in terms of executive functioning, organizational skills, self-advocacy skills, maturity levels, motivation, you know, that type of thing. For example, Jen has said that in fifth grade, it's a more significant struggle, and that could be because of the transition from elementary to middle school.
Yeah, we've actually talked about that. I've been working with fifth grade for 12 years now, and I have never seen some of the behaviors that I'm seeing this year that are pretty concerning in terms of level of disrespect and issues. I mean, probably five, six, seven times a week, I'm doing mediation between students, so. So it's, it looks different, as you're saying, but it's been busier than ever.
And I think at the high school, I've talked to Andrea and Suzanne and the guidance counselors and the school psychologists, and I think it's the level of hospitalizations and school avoidance, those have been, it's been a pretty good increase in that, pretty significant. So I would say that's been maybe a difference in that maybe you haven't seen that type of at the other levels, but the high school level, we have seen more of that. Again, as far as what we do, we have a number of different things in place. As far as, it's a team approach, so we have the guidance counselors kind of act as a liaison with the family. The big piece is communication, keeping the whole line of communication open. So the facility that the student may be at, as well as the teachers, the parents, and then we have the social workers and everybody all combined to kind of make sure that we're staying on top of where the student is, what type of supports that we could do from, you know, outside, but also more importantly, when they come back in, so like a reentry meeting. So now that, when a student comes back in, where are we at? What kind of supports are they going to need back in the classroom? And there are a number of different things, not just one-on-one. We have the BRIDGE program, which is, we're continuing to reviewing what that'll look like. But that's basically a piece of like an academic and social, emotional support. So it's kind of two different staff that work with these students, and it's meant, geared toward just the reentry piece of it. So it's a shorter-term process, but obviously, getting adjusted socially into the school system again, into the building on a daily basis, keeping up with work, things like that, can be a challenge. So it's not just, hey, you're back, we're all set, you know? So it's really important that we address those two, but.
Can I ask, how long is that transition period with that BRIDGE program?
It's case by case. So sometimes, depends on what the situation is. It may not have been that much of a break between learning, keeping up with the classes and schoolwork, severity of the mental health issues. So it kind of, it goes case by case, yeah.
You have a question. So you're graduating seniors who have now gone through two years of COVID. And I'm sort of curious if you've seen any impact to that in their anxiety about moving on to college or universities more so than you have in the past in any way?
Yeah, I mean, I think anecdotally, we've definitely seen the rise and the increase. When you think about that stage, right, that half of their high school year is right in the going on. We even have, one of the groups is kind of geared towards leaving high school for a support group. So it's definitely an area of concern. I think, again, we've done everything we've can to counsel the students and to prep them for that. And so it is something that's on our radar, and I would say it has affected more, but I think we're just, you know, promoting that out there as far as they're going to be okay. And more so much, I think we've promoted more of the services at the colleges than ever before. So we're kind of, you're leaving us, but, you know, I don't think we've seen as much in past years as far as making sure that they know where to go when they get to the college. Every college has a support office as well, and I don't think that's maybe the typical process or information to share when you're talking about majors and the size of the school and things like that. I think that that may not be something that's been on the radar, and it has been now, so.
That's a question I should probably ask Kevin Piscadlo, huh? He deals with it all the time, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm actually going to talk about, starting with kind of stating the obvious. As we're talking about the pandemic, and there's been such an increase in requests and need for mental health support, and unfortunately, there aren't enough professionals out in the community to meet those needs. And that has been a very significant issue for the student support staff at the school, because what we've been doing is trying really hard to kind of bridge that gap for people until they're able to secure counseling. So the waitlists are daunting, and it's, so what that's done is kind of increased the need, as we're saying, not necessarily for the very not significant mental illness we're dealing with, day-to-day struggles. Families are struggling, you know, kids are struggling. So that's something that we've been working really hard to try to address the needs as much as possible. And what's been difficult, too, is that there are a lot of virtual appointments that are available or more readily available, but for a lot of our kids, that's an additional barrier for them. They would rather come in and talk to someone face-to-face and kind of make it part of their day. So I have to say, as I said earlier, I've been working for 12 years, and I have never seen the parade of students through my office like I have this past year. Kids are very receptive, and I think part of it may be the stigma, thankfully, is, you know, is disappearing. And that kids feel like it's okay to go check in with a counselor. So that's been a really positive and really exciting part. But I have to admit, we haven't been able to even meet the needs of all the students. It's a rare day that I'm actually able to get to all the students that are requesting time. So the requests have increased, and we are so fortunate and appreciative of all of you for supporting Dory Blyden, who's the new counselor in our building. And to be honest, I have no idea how we would do the work we're doing presently without her kind of joining our team, because she's been a tremendous addition to our team. What it has done is allowed, actually, Andrew and I both work with one grade level. So it's allowed the counselors to have just one grade level, which doesn't sound like a lot, but trust me, it's a lot with the needs that are kind of coming through our door right now. But Dory has been a tremendous addition because it supports kids, families, and staff, because we're doing a waterfall. So she, I will be following the fifth grade up to sixth grade, and then she'll be coming down to fifth grade. So that allows us to really prepare teachers and allow students to feel comfortable with us so we can help make that transition seamless. And it helps because whenever I'm talking to parents, I say, hey, listen, the wonderful news is I really know your child right now, and I'll be following, you know, him or her up to, you know, kind of next year. So that's really helped with the transitions. The first time at the Galvin, we've been able to do that. So that's a hugely exciting time. And I have to say, just with Dory's addition, we have been able to do more groups, as Dave's saying. We're doing more groups. We are doing an amigos group, a group for our students. We've seen a tremendous increase in our students that speak both Portuguese and Spanish. And we've been doing that once a cycle. We have about 25 to 30 consistent kids just from our lower house that attend this meeting and really look forward to it and are excited to engage with the group. So the two of us are working on, in the fall, we're going to be doing some time-limited groups on anxiety, so we're able to kind of reach more kids and have a more structured approach and a longer-than-lunch groups. So using a full period to really work on strategies to support kids and support them in terms of their coping strategies and handling what's been a really difficult time for everybody. Let's see, in terms of some, another thing that we're talking about, and actually, Andrew and I met with Doug and Kara, is to talk about a multidisciplinary assessment team. And it's basically trying to address the increased needs of students in our school. And what that is, is it's bringing professionals from all different disciplines coming together and kind of looking at a situation, a student that may be struggling, from all different lenses, which really allows people to get a new perspective. And sometimes, as you know, when you're struggling with something, it's hard to kind of take a step back and be a little bit more objective. And our hope is to have a lot of our community partners join this team, you know, DMH, DCF, the health department, staff from all levels, and really allowing a staff member to come forward and present and get some feedback, because sometimes it can be somewhat isolating to be struggling with a particular child or, you know, a particular situation on your own without kind of the feedback from multiple disciplines, and also just, you know, from different professionals within the community. And I think one of our biggest improvements has also been, as Andrew's saying, in terms of our community partnerships, which I have to say, over the past 12 years that I've been here, have grown tremendously and really does impact the care that we can give to our families. So this multidisciplinary assessment team not only will help children and staff and families, you know, dealing with some of these frustrating situations that families are unfortunately, you know, enduring, but it also brings our community together and kind of builds on those relationships. So when we do have an issue or a problem going on, that I'll have a regular relationship with a member or a professional from Department of Mental Health, that we'll have this relationship so I can call and say, hey, listen, I've got a child I'm working with that I'm really worried. Can you help me figure out, you know, what we can do to support this family? You know, so it's kind of, it's building those relationships within our community. But it also can really be very supportive and very helpful just to look at a problem from multiple different lenses. So that's some of the things that we're working on and are excited to kind of implement moving forward, so, thank you.
I will finish up, so one of these things is not like the other. I am not in the schools. I am in our health department. And part of my role is to really kind of support the schools and look at some of our qualitative data and quantitative data and understand what, around mental health and substance use. How can we support, how can we leverage the existing resources out there? And how can we take an opportunity to write for funding or to provide support to the school system in some of the areas that kind of rise to our attention when we do things like the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or we do the SOS screening? We're just listening to them talk and understand the challenges. So looking, identifying those evidence-based strategies. So around the, when we started doing ESPT, we understood, okay, what do we do if someone screens positive? Or what do we do if a student is caught using a substance at school? So a few years ago, we designed our own diversion program for any student that was caught vaping or under the influence at school. This past year, we were able to apply to be part of Harvard MGH's Evidence-Based I Decide Program. So that's their diversion program. And luckily, it was very close to what we had already been doing. So students are identified. So, um, students are identified by vice principals and recommended for the program. And they take a a two-hour class with Mr. Sidroni after school. We have them about, um, once every six weeks to two months. And then, um, do one on intensive one-on-one follow-ups to understand if there's more of an issue going on there. And maybe they are recommended for something further, and that's with Suzanne Burns. So that's the diversion program.
Can you describe, you know, in how might a student be diverted or how might a student?
Oh, yes. So, um, I know, I've been living this program so long. So instead, um, so what we actually did was back in the day, we changed the school policy. So instead, so we went back and looked at the, um, typical, uh, protocol if a student were to get in trouble using, get caught vaping in the bathroom or under the influence instead of the, um, getting suspended from school and maybe even getting, um, having other punishments. Really looking at reducing that, um, suspension time or not having a suspension at all and, um, really diverting them and getting them the help and support that they need.
I think it came out of the kind of the restorative justice movement, right? I mean, that that kind of traditional punitive consequences are not extremely beneficial or helpful. Um, you know, for some kids, they are, right? Traditional punitive consequences, um, you know, for individuals like that. Speeding ticket, speeding ticket, things like that, right? You you get a a harsh consequence for violating an expectation or a rule. Um, that's absolutely inhibitive for some individuals, some students, but for others, it's not. Um, so this is more of, and, uh, you know, an opportunity to establish a trusted relationship with students, have a real conversation with them about their substance use, very nonjudgmental approach, uh, very casual conversation, but also educate them on the dangers and risks associated with substance use and kind of that trajectory that they're on if they are get caught, are the caught using at such an early age. Um, and then again, as Catherine said, if the if the significant risk is is very high in terms of what they're reporting to use, there's the option to much more, uh, you know, formal referral system, especially through I decide, which is fantastic. So it'll supplement what we're already doing very, very well. So we're excited to get that training.
Yeah, so this year, we've had 24 students at the high school that have been referred to the diversion program and gone through it so far. So, um, and the infractions have been from vaping, THC use and under the influence of alcohol. So, um, through this, we'll be able to, um, track some outcomes and understand, um, are there reoffenses, things like that. So, um, stay tuned. We'll have some more information on the results of this, um, program. But where, um, as we said, numbers are up, even though our YRBS showed a dip. We do, we are anecdotally seeing more youth substance use, so so all over trends.
Catherine, I don't know if you said it, so my apologies. How far do you follow them after you introduce them into this program? Is it two years you follow them?
So, um, they just do a few follow-ups and then, so actually, the students that, um, were enrolled in the program in October because of fall time, fall offenses. Actually, Suzanne Burns has been touching base again with them. And she actually offers a support group for students that are trying to reduce or quit using. So, um, it's really, um, the students really feel like they're supported where they're at. They're not being lectured at and it really is, um, something that is showing to make an impact. And and Suzanne has had a lot of students that have heard about diversion actually approach her and say, I really want to quit vaping. Um, do you think you could help me? So those are students that haven't even been referred to the program. So I think it's just, um, you know, it's been positive so far. And then, um, the other piece, uh, that I just wanted to highlight was the, um, this actually comes out of part of the school budget and part of the town budget is the Interface Referral Program. Um, that's something that we've been doing here in Wakefield for about five years. And it's really that match service that, um, a parent or anyone can utilize to connect them to behavioral health care. And they'll do all of the work to understand what the insurance is, understand what your availability is and to match someone with, um, behavioral health care provider. So that's the Interface Referral Service. Um, and we've been tracking data on that for the past five years. So this year, we had, um, and we actually can see which school they're referred to, the age group, the presenting, um, use whether whether it's divorce, anxiety, substance use. Um, so we had 91, um, people utilize the resource this year. And as Jen said, um, it's it's a lot harder on their end to do the work now because wait lists are so long. So it is, oh, you know, it's a lot of work to find someone, um, a therapy appointment. Um, and, um, and it's something that we're seeing the demand has increased. So, um, and we know Interface, we were one of the first communities in the area to enroll. And we were hearing from neighboring school districts that are trying to get in that it's a two-year wait now. So, um, we're glad we have this resource, even though it is, uh, it is a bit more demanding. So, um, we're continuing to listen to try to understand what the needs are of the schools. Um, providing things like translating devices for, um, we have these pocket talks that we'll have in all the schools that, um, can be helpful for our school counselors to run their multi-language groups. Um, and we're bringing, hopefully bringing on a full-time community service, coordinator who will be able to support school counselors and in supporting families and getting things like food access to enrolling in healthcare and doing all that supportive services. So, um, we're, we're hopeful for more on the horizon.
Oh, yeah. I I I can't speak enough to the support that Catherine provides, the school district, the Department of Health. Um, just as a quick side note, uh, you know, I I speak with Adam Collantoni, former Galvin principal regularly. And he always asks me, how did you do this? How did, how do you get this? How did we get this in the district? How did we get that? And I was like, well, Catherine, well, Catherine. And he's like, I don't have a Catherine. And I said, well, you know, I'm sorry, that's.
You can't have ours.
Yeah, yeah. You know, that's, you know, the community, we, the community partners are huge, huge, so. Any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, it's great seeing the partnership and that was a great presentation. I appreciate you coming, uh, once again. I'm curious to pick up on on something you had said, um, about the average kind of wait for a student who may be seeking to speak with a counselor. What would you say the average kind of wait from a student expressing an interest in in speaking with someone to when that actually is able to be done at the Galvin? And then do you have a similar sense at the high school?
You're saying in terms of outside counseling or are you saying within the school?
No, within the school.
Um, it really does depend. I mean, um, there are students that that came and asked me right, oh, this morning. And and I saw many kids today that that came, came today. So it really depends on their presentation, how they're doing. Sometimes I'll I'll say, you know, is this something that needs like immediate attention or, you know what I mean? So I do have to to kind of prioritize, but but we do it pretty quickly. And a lot of times we'll do like a quick assessment and then schedule something, you know, in a, in a few days or something like that. But but it it genuinely has been just a parade all day long, you know, it's 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 busy. But but that's a good thing too, because kids are, like I said, feeling, I think, really comfortable seeking out support. So, I mean, that's what we want.
Definitely.
I think the referral time in in school is fairly quick, you know.
Yeah.
I I usually prioritize based on how well I know the student, right? So if I have a frequent flyer who comes to me regularly and says, Mr. Sider, emails me and says, Mr. Sider, need to check in. Or I have a scheduling app that they can schedule, middle school kids can schedule me on. Um, I'm like, yeah, absolutely, sounds good. But if if someone who I hadn't spoken to in a while or maybe someone who's never reached out to me, reaches out, they be raised to the top of the firing list immediately, you know, because it's much more novel that they're reaching out, so.
That's great.
And we do have kids coming to us just and, you know, and volunteers and, you know, we do have, you know, it's great too. We have parents that are reaching out to us, asking if they'd be willing to check in with their child, you know. So we, we kind of get referrals from teachers. They come in themselves. We, parents contact us. And so it's, it's become pretty comprehensive in the school.
It's the same as the high school.
Same, yeah. Great, thank you.
Yeah, Stephen.
Um, just to sort of capitalize on that, the idea of the parents and and the family component. I know you had said that, um, you feel like for students, that sort of the stigma of mental health is is sort of coming away a little bit. Is is maybe they gain more understanding. Are you seeing parallels with families as a whole? That they they're approaching maybe at a higher level than they had previously and and we're sort of ready to meet them at that space?
I certainly feel like I've spoken to more parents this year than I ever have in the past. So if that's a, you know, a, a, a measure of how much I'm engaging, I mean, I I feel like more parents have reached out to me. Um, and that's always a good thing, because I think sometimes parents are hesitant to reach out to the school counselor because they think there's a problem, it's a bad thing, or there's something wrong or what's going on, you know, the student's in trouble. Um, but, and that's one of the reasons why we started the chat with the counselor and consultation, right? Because we wanted to let families know that chatting with your school counselor is not necessarily a bad thing. It's not, no one's in trouble. It's a, it's a good thing. And I actually, one of the things I really enjoy is just, you know, consultation with families around different issues that they see in middle school. Um, so, yeah, I, in my personal opinion, you know, post-COVID, I I feel like I've interacted with many more parents than I have in the past, which is good.
I have to say, being a fifth grade counselor is something that's, it's a completely different situation than every other grade. I I talk to parents all the time and I meet parents and kids before they even are part of our school community. Um, so it, so it is different. It's a very, you know, what I do is very different from what Andrew does. Um, so, so they they readily do reach out.
I think at the high school, again, I'm not as much, the counselors all day long, you can see that they're interacting with the parents on the phones a lot. Uh, you see the parents come in. So I think, uh, I would probably say it mirrors pretty much everything you're seeing. Maybe not as much as fifth grade, but.
And on the communication front, for all of our events, like we have Lynn Lyons come and speak at Parent University. We have the AMET tomorrow night. We always, Andrew's always putting out the ways to get in touch with the school staff. So if someone's listening in and saying, you really do encourage people to come out and pushing the website. The Student Support Website is a great resource. So, um, trying to kind of outreach as much as we can through social media, through different avenues to get in touch with someone.
That's great. Um, I, one other question sort of around substance abuse in groups. How is your approach different if you sort of zero in on like a peer group, like a subset of of students that might be exhibiting that behavior as a, as a tribe, for lack of a better term? Whereas, you know, and there might be other instances where it's an individual that sort of stands out. How do you sort of address that if they, if their system, if their social network is sort of plugged into substance?
It's a good question. It's one of the things we talk about in diversion, right? Is, um, you know, what's your motivation to reduce your substance use, right? And if you decided to reduce your substance use, what's your plan? And what would your immediate friends think or say? Um, and we talk a lot about the people you hang out with, right, and the friends you keep. And if, uh, what are the motivation for using substances? Is it coping strategies? Is it, um, you know, kind of, uh, social reasons and things like that? So it's a big, a big part of what we talk about in diversion programs. And it comes about a lot, you know, because a lot of students will say, well, yeah, all of my friends use X, Y, and Z, and that's why I use it, things like that. Um, so at least the 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 class that I run is about really pushing some self-reflective skills with these students, about where they want to go and what they want to do. And part, a big part of that is who they're hanging out with and, you know, what that, what that means. Um, because, yeah, I know that is obviously a big piece in in high school.
And and just to piggyback on that, I know we're running late, but we do have multiple prevention strategies. And I know we've presented on them, but I just have to do a shout out to the Athletics Department. They actually have been doing a lot in the last couple of weeks with their coaches. And the coaches have, um, participated in some workshops on, um, talking points to their athletes and and things. Because we know students really look up to their coaches and their varsity. So we're going to be, um, doing some more work with captains in the future and things like that. So, um, there's more to come around that.
That sounds great.
Go ahead, Amy, please.
Okay. After you.
So just for background, just to, just to kind of give a little bit more information. And and so the counselors won't provide this, right? A short time ago, we didn't have screeners. A short time ago, the, this level of collaboration was not happening the way that it is. Um, it's not only happening because of COVID. It's a, it's a large part of it. Um, but it's happening because of the level of, um, kind of the work that they're doing, the ideas that they have, how they want to change, how the clinicians want to change, how we provide support for students and families in our district, right? So I, I, again, I stated a short time ago, we didn't have screeners. Um, Andrew talked about, you know, providing what what screeners look like to our Student Services Subcommittee earlier this year. And and Amy, you asked a question about, well, why don't we have an elementary screener?
I didn't.
You did.
You did.
It wasn't Amy.
No, no, it was you.
It was you, I remember, yeah.
You you asked why we didn't, why, why didn't we have an ele, an elementary screener? Um, in that debrief, Andrew said, you know, I don't, I don't know why we don't have an elementary screener. I I should get on this. And he's reporting tonight that he's doing work and they piloted an elementary screener. Um, you know, being available to parents and try to, trying, trying to understand and hear what their thoughts are, how they're struggling. Having an open phone call on Zoom just to take all comers in regard to how we might just connect with people, right? So one of the things that they've taken on is this idea of just physical connection, right? They're not doing, you know, this idea of face-to-face connection. And how do we kind of assess levels of of need and levels of safety and then how do we provide that support? So I I think that 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 work has been exemplary, right? You know, Catherine, you, Catherine introduced herself earlier, if you caught this. She is from the Department of Health and Human Services. There's a new department in the town, which the town needs a lot of credit for in regard to the town leadership. Because I understand, I spoke with Anthony Choi today, you also have a social worker starting next week, which will be an extension of this clinical group, right? Which is really forward-thinking and a lot of towns don't have that, right? And so, um, you know, the the work that David Robinson has done with Andrew in regard to setting up, you know, small surveys outside of the YRBS year, just to get a sense of where students are. Um, these things are really unique, how that work also intersects. You know, and and Catherine brought the youth council into this work, right? So the, these are things that are not small undertakings, you know. They subtly refer to, oh, the NAN project or the work that we're doing with Elliot. Not, groups like this are not, uh, commonplace in in districts. And so I think the work that they're doing is is exemplary. And and I feel like they're not going to sell themselves on this because that's not what counselors do. It's about service to people. Um, but the, how you have changed and how you are changing, how we provide service, I think, um, cannot be understated. So I I just want to say thank you very much. Genuinely, genuinely appreciate it. It's making a difference for our students and families, but.
I thought you were going to ask my question, but you didn't.
I actually have two questions. One is about executive functioning support and what we offer for kids at all levels. I know they struggle.
Absolutely. I think it's actually been probably one of the larger hits of COVID, right? Because students learn, I don't know, I can speak for my son, for example. He usually get their lockers at a certain age or certain group, and they didn't have lockers. So he didn't get lockers until two years later. And all of a sudden, they made the announcement, you're going to put your backpack in your locker, and he freaked out, you know, and look, you know. So those types, it's a perfect little example, right? Or how to manage your homework. Younger kids potentially maybe using a paper and pencil agenda book. Older kids maybe start to switch to Google Classroom, things like that. Those executive functioning strategies and organizations, um, you know, definitely took a hit during COVID because of the hybrid learning and the reduction of kind of responsibility and demands and things on certain kids, right? Um, so we do have team time, uh, scheduled in at Galvin every day, right? And that's a time where, you know, it's, it's always a little bit of a battle with students to encourage them to use team time effectively. Uh, you can use it suddenly as a, uh, a study hall to get caught up on work. You can also use it to, I see kids often cleaning out their locker, sitting on the floor, pulling everything out, reorganizing, reorganizing their binders, checking with teachers if they're behind, uh, grade-wise, right? If a student tells me they're struggling academically and they don't have a grade that they want, uh, my first thing to tell them is during team time, head over to the math teacher's classroom and ask them what assignments need to get caught up on, those types of things. So that's the the best built-in, uh, executive functioning support right now. Um, and and teachers are kind of leading that, you know, within their classrooms in terms of what to do. But it is definitely a struggle.
And it has been, um, really brutal for it, for our young students. Um, because typically when they do come to fifth grade, there's a lot more handholding that happens, um, you know, in fifth grade. And then they have a little bit more and more independence, um, which is just more developmentally appropriate as they go through the grades. Um, so a lot of our kids really did miss out on, on, you know, kind of that that opportunity to to really have their fifth grade teachers really work very closely with them on the executive functioning skills. So, so it's something that's lacking and I know the teachers are really trying to catch up and utilize some of the time during the day to to support kids. Because it, we're, we're seeing it all over the place. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And then the other thing, we, we've been working on the Policy Committee on the Responsible Use of Technology. I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, but if you could speak to how cell phones might play into some of the mental health issues we're seeing?
Huge.
Yeah.
Huge. Uh, you know, I think the last two years for students, you know, and and parents, myself, right? Um, there was a much more heavier reliance on devices in general. We're talking Zoom, you're talking texting, emails, social media. Um, there was an increase in isolation, right, because of quarantining and staying away from crowds and things like that, right? Social distancing. Um, and those were kind of a bit of a perfect storm. And I think that has resulted in a decrease in social skills, face-to-face social skills. Um, we got back to having dances or night spots at Galvin, right? And historically, when I would talk to students about it, they'd be so excited to go. And the majority of the students I talked to, the eighth graders, were panicked. talked to, the eighth graders, were panicked about it, you know, because they hadn't had, they'd never had a dance or anything like that. So they were supposed to have their first dance in sixth grade or seventh grade, you know, and they hadn't gotten, they hadn't had it yet. So we're seeing more of that social anxiety, which to me is a direct result of living on social media and socializing on social media with their peers. And then that's going to cause a lot of peer conflicts, a lot of drama, a lot of typical middle school drama. And I see it a lot, a lot of the face-to-face, oh, why don't you just talk to them about this? Why don't you just advocate to your teacher for this? There's a lack of that social skills. And I do think it's a direct correlation with the time spent on, you know, technology devices and things like that.
I think too, at the high school, not only that is an impact, but also with just self-esteem, the increase, all the things that Andrew just mentioned. But on top of that, the self-esteem, the insecurities, everything that that just does to students. We've noticed a really big uptick on that being an issue for going to a counselor to talk to.
It seems like the smartphones, not to get off, because Doug and I have talked about this about 100 times about smartphones. Do you just take them away? Or do you try to teach them how to use it appropriately?
Personally, my philosophy is try to teach them how to use it, right? But also limit it and, you know, kind of so time limitations as well as content restrictions. So I actually gave a Parent University talk recently on digest. But a lot of families don't know. Granted.
Did you give it to the parents, too?
I did, yes. So I, you know, I have two middle school-aged sons, and, you know, I'm Apple, the Apple device family, right, so iPhones. And the screen time that is embedded into Apple phones is actually extremely useful, but a lot of families don't know about it. But you can restrict time, content. There's a, you know, hundreds, dozens of different ways to restrict your child's cellphone. For example, you can just turn off their actual web browsers. They have no, you know, use of a web browser, so they can't search. My son has begged me for Snapchat. He's a seventh grader, and he gets 10 minutes a day. So my philosophy is you can't get into much trouble in 10 minutes. And also, before he got it on his phone, he had it on my phone for about two to three months, where we looked at it together every night, every other night. So I, he basically, we learned together how to use the social media. And when I was confident with the content of what his friends were putting out there and what he wanted to put out there, then I transferred it over to his phone. But again, still 10 minutes a day, so he doesn't love it. But, so, yeah, it is, it's a lot of, but it's a lot of heavy lifting for parents. It's a lot. It is tons to stay on top of it. There are always new apps, new friend groups, new devices, sneaky ways to get messages and things out. So it is a lot.
I don't wish you could do it globally within a school, because I'm sure it's applied by different parents, different ways.
Yeah, 100%.
So it's very inconsistent versus if there's some global way in a school, you could create some mechanism to restrict access. Maybe that's an ideal world that doesn't exist now, but.
I will do a plug for that Parent University. He co-led with our youth action team leaders, because there were just a lot of concrete things. And we got so much positive feedback from parents who participated in that, because they said, oh, they were just concrete tips.
Which I do think is.
I attended that, and I have to say the whole like Snap Map thing.
Oh, yeah, you were attending.
That was an amazing session. It was, I learned stuff that was just.
Yeah, I know. Some of the stuff is scary. It really is. It really is. It's eye-opening.
And we are seeing an uptick in some inappropriate stuff that's being put on platforms, you know, about teachers, about, you know, so it's been.
And it's pushing younger grades, too, like third, fourth, and fifth.
Much younger.
We're seeing.
Yes, yes. And there's been a lot of issues around that, so.
Realistically, we've always seen in our students kind of replicated what is going on in the community and the culture and with the adults, right? And you all know, right? I know my hometown Facebook resident page, things like that, right? The ugliness of social media with adults, right? So it's unfortunately not a surprise. It trickles down to our kids. But, yeah, no, it's kind of current struggle, you know, in today's society. But, yeah, something we deal with daily, you know, in middle school. That's going up on, someone said this on TikTok or made this comment on my, you know, Snapchat, things like that.
Well, thank you very, very much. Certainly, you did not go over. There was no amount of time. No, seriously. This is such a critically important topic. It's something that's discussed in every home, in every town, in the country, never mind going on right here in our school. So your work is critical, it's essential, it's greatly important, and we very much appreciate it. So.
We appreciate this a lot.
Through the superintendent, through everything, the continued things that you may need from the school committee, additional supports and resources. We very much appreciate this work and want to be able to continue to make sure that you have the resources that you need.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're a tough act to follow with comments. It's funny, their presentation ended, and then it's like we're just visiting with them, right? And they can, you know, we can ask questions and they can fill it in.
You could go till midnight.
We could go for quite a while. But, and that's one of the reasons why we want to have them back, right? Because, you know, to understand a little bit more about the resourcing, the structure, and the changes over time, and their hands in this work, I think, really just cannot be understated. And, you know, we can talk more about this, and we can certainly talk about it in different subcommittees. But their tireless commitment to really adapt and meet the needs of the kids and families is just really unbelievable. It's really unbelievable. And it also ties into this past, we lost, as Tom started. Thank you, Tom, for making your comment. I'll kind of give my updates and comments now. But Tom started the evening by talking about the loss of one of our power educators, Nancy Milns, who worked at Woodville Elementary. But over the weekend, our crisis team convened, our counselors, you know, we had additional counseling support at the Woodville. And that was really all kind of taken up by, you know, Matt Carter and leaders of David, excuse me, Brian Robertson, A.J. Beebe, Marina Zortzis, you know, the PTO at Woodville kind of mobilized over the weekend. It was really just to welcome staff in early, at a faculty meeting early on Monday morning, just to kind of touch base and see how people were feeling and then maybe what they might need for the day themselves as adults, but also to be mindful and planful around what kids may need. They really did an exceptional job. And that's all the work that our clinicians do behind the scene, right? So it's connected to the work and the information that you're hearing tonight. So, Tom, thank you for making your comments this evening about Nancy Milns. And thank you, everybody, for just giving a moment to have a moment of silence for that faculty member. So I think there'll be more information to follow on that. So thank you very much. I know Isabella and Sophia talked about teacher appreciation. Tom, thank you for the proclamation. I think, you know, words for us, I mean, we can't say enough about our faculty and staff, our teachers that make the weather for kids, right? They make the days go by. And they're beloved by students and families, and we can't express our appreciation enough. I was at Woodville Monday, and it was a little like a florist in that every kid coming in the door had flowers for their teachers. It was really remarkable. It was great to see. But, you know, but Tom, thank you for the proclamation. Much appreciated. So additional information, we welcome two new school committee members, Eileen and Kevin. Welcome. We're going to be setting up some tours. And for any school committee members that missed school tours, we'll be able to get you around the schools. You'll be able to get a sense of what each school, kind of how it operates, how it feels like. You'll be able to meet some personnel and especially meet some students. It's really, it will be the best part of, you know, Kevin, I know you work at a high school, but to see, you know, to see a Doyle Early Learning Center is really, it's heart-filling. It's just great stuff.
Hey, we could go see Kevin.
School committee trip to.
Whatever you want.
Reverse trip.
Even out-of-town permit.
That would be great. Just, I also, we want to give special thanks to the Wakeville Education Foundation for bringing back the celebration of learning. Congratulations to all of the teachers and students that were recognized. Really, an amazing, amazing night. You know, I think Melissa Holmes, Carrie Mazzone, Elizabeth Russell, Sue Warden, I think, you know, they're amazing. Just, they're just fantastic, fantastic people. We're lucky as a community to have them working and leading the work of WEF. And so, earlier, you heard the students talk about Unity Day, and that was coordinated by Jason Pavy and Margaret Messier, so we need to give thanks to them. But that was also grant-funded through WEF, right? That's an important piece that I think sometimes can get lost. Just other information that I have, just, I always share kind of COVID cases. We have seen a dramatic uptick. And I see Kevin shaking his head because he's probably seen the same at his college. And so last week, we had 44 cases on Friday. This week, as of today, we have 66 cases. Yeah, so the numbers are really kind of coming fast and furious. We're seeing, you know, people cycle in and out. We seem to be managing it better. But we still want to be aware of vulnerabilities that students and adults have and any adjustments that we need to make. Our nurses have been remarkable and continue to kind of lead the way and really just supporting in ways that are really not common. You know, they support families, they support siblings. One of our nurses today said, you know, I think the kid wasn't feeling well yesterday. I'm going up to get him, and I'm going to test him. Like, you know, going to get him, you know? And I love that attitude. And so it was great. And so that's a quick update and comments for me. Any questions that anyone has, happy to take them. Welcome to our new members. And it's great to, it's a great evening.
Can you just?
Yes, sir.
Any word on whether or not the state is going to continue to supply tests?
We have not heard that they will continue to supply tests. I believe with the uptick and the number of rapid tests that are available, that they will be. And if they don't, we may have enough to keep testing going for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, we got 40 cases last week.
Yeah.
Keeps coming.
Great.
We'll distribute as long as we have.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great.
Do you need a couple hundred cases? Is that what I hear you saying? That's who's passing by. Bless her.
And is one school getting hit harder? Like, the 66, is that all students or what's the breakdown?
Um, I don't have the breakdown here with me, but, right, so Galvin and Woodville seem, the numbers seem to be a little different than some of the other schools. But we'll be given that breakout. We'll actually be reporting tomorrow afternoon to DESI. We report every Wednesday afternoon to DESI. And then we compile the numbers on Friday to send out the update to the community.
Have the flu numbers come down? Before we, our last meeting, you said those were high.
The flu numbers at Galvin were really high, and the nurses are continuing to see flu and other kind of ailments. And so what's hard is that when people test negative for COVID, some, our nurses are directing our students to ask if they're going to the pediatrician, to just ask to be tested for flu. And not all, if they're testing negative for COVID, I think parents are feeling like, phew, just, we'll just keep them home until they get, they get over whatever they have. And so not everyone's being tested for flu, but flu and, you know, the stomach bug and just some other things that we've had are, have been difficult. So.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving along. Subcommittee reports. The Finance and Facilities Subcommittee has not met since our last meeting, so there is nothing to report there. Labor Relations has met a couple of times since our last meeting, and we continue to make progress in negotiating with Unit C and beginning the admin groups. So we'll keep the committee informed as that progresses. Student Services, Mr. Bedrow.
We haven't met since last meeting.
Okay. Policy and Communications, Dr. Piscatlo.
Yeah, Policy and Communication Subcommittee met two weeks ago. I believe that was the 26th. The bulk of our meeting was working together collaboratively on our conflict resolution policy. I reported at the last meeting, we collaborated a little bit with WEA, got it some additional feedback, and we're continuing to kind of hone that policy. Just a preview, probably at our next meeting, we hope to have two policies ready to put on the table. One is our social harassment Title IX policy. That is in excellent shape and look forward to placing that next Tuesday on the table. And then others, one that I've also mentioned before, is our Standards for Responsible Use of Technology policy. So those are the two will be forthcoming next Tuesday with the conflict resolution, hopefully being not too far behind it.
Kevin? Are those policies like tweaking policies that already exist, or are they just like brand-new?
I wouldn't say they're brand-new. I mean, but there's some significant overhauls, though, you know, because we have an acceptable use policy as it is. But I think this is kind of modernizing what's there. I think it's addressing some of the recent concerns, like some of the social media things that we've been talking about, different things like that. And then social harassment in Title IX is, of course, exists right now, but it's certainly being updated, particularly with some of the regulatory changes that have been forthcoming, et cetera. So, yeah, so they're existing policies, but I'd say it's significant overhauls. They don't look at all like, in my opinion, what they have been.
Okay, very good. Next, future dates and agenda items. Just here on the agenda is a list of variety of upcoming meetings, just to make sure we all get them on our calendar. May recall, the school committee put three meetings in the month of May, tonight being one of three. So our next meeting is next Tuesday, May 10, which would be sort of back on regular cycle, meaning second and fourth. Then the following, two weeks after that, would be Tuesday, May 24. So after tonight, we get back in cycle for second and fourth, which also carries through into the month of June, June 14 and June 28. Also added in there, Monday, May 16, is the first night of town meeting at the Galvin. So we want to make sure that we keep that on our radar screen and be attendant there and certainly seek to support the school department budget, but also our colleagues across town government in making town meetings successful. Okay, any other thoughts or questions or ideas for future agenda items anyone has to share tonight? Yes, Stephen?
If we could put on a future agenda item to have the youth council come and maybe give us a presentation. I think they were looking to maybe have some time with us and just talk about the work that they're doing.
Sure, great idea. Okay, so going around the table with school committee comments as we're winding down tonight. If I could start with Dr. Piscatlo.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to start, like so many have, just expressing my own personal condolences to Nancy's family, the entire school community, particularly those in Woodville. So her coworkers, the students in her class, et cetera. And so I appreciated the moment of silence as well. Want to welcome Kevin and Eileen to the group. Look forward to working with you. And, you know, want to thank Amy Wall for her service to the committee over the past year and wish her well in what she's going to be doing personally and professionally. Lastly, just want to echo what we had talked a little bit about in acknowledging the great work this week, particularly of our teachers and just the appreciation for the work that they do day in and day out, particularly as the motion had mentioned, or the proclamation mentioned during probably one of the most difficult times ever to be in education. So I hope they enjoy this week and feel the appreciation from everybody in the community and certainly everyone at this table for the work that they do every day. Thank you.
Amy?
Everything that Kevin said. I'm going to miss sitting next to you.
Great. And so, Eileen? Great, and so Eileen?
Um, well, I want to say thanks for the warm welcome from everyone. I'm really excited. Um, and just, ah, I want to echo everything that, Kevin, you kind of summed everything up.
You should go first, every time.
I know. You kind of summed everything up, but I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome and, um, I'm really excited to be on the team.
Yeah, likewise, just thanks, everybody, the superintendent, um, everyone that, you know, all of you guys for talking to me. And, you know, just kind of trying to show us all the ropes, um, you know, much appreciated. And, uh, yeah, just like what Kevin said, um, about Teacher Appreciation Week, it's been a real tough two years, um, you know, for definitely students, but also, also our faculty and, um, just want to say, yeah, we, we feel it, we hear you and, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm not going to welcome Eileen and Kevin. I think enough is enough. No, no, it's great to have you here. Um, I wanted to recognize those that have moved into new positions. Stephen, a glorious position that I'm passing the torch to, so I wish, if you need any tutoring, let me know, it's a pretty complex role. Um, Amy coming in as the vice chair, great, great selection certainly, and certainly to you, Tom, uh, great selection there. I'm sure you're going to do a wonderful job, will be guiding us as we go through, who knows what, what awaits us as we go forward, so congratulations to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen?
Um, yeah, I would, uh, I would just mention, uh, again, sort of Ms. Milns, um, was, so our, she worked with Ms., uh, with Florence, um, in the kindergarten at the Woodville and our, our son had the, uh, the opportunity to sort of have her in that class and I know that, um, she was just wonderful. She was so, I mean, absolutely missed. Um, and it was, that, that class was, is just forever going to be etched in our brain, how much it, it, it did for Cal and how that class, um, is so cohesive still. They're in third grade and those kids are still like best friends, uh, no matter where they are in the school. Um, and it just speaks a lot to the work that, that she did, um, in that class, you know, with, with Florence. Yeah, it's, it's amazing. Um, I want to draw attention to, um, there was the event that happened at the middle school, the, um, the Day of Silence, um, and that along with the, the Day of Unity that's happening at the high school, that there's great work happening, um, sort of coming from our, our youth in our schools. Um, and I think it speaks volumes as to, um, sort of how they're being taught and to be able to think for themselves and figure out what is important to themselves and how they want to message that out to, um, to the leaders, uh, in our schools. We talk about trusted adults and, um, and if those students didn't feel like they were in a, a trusted environment, they wouldn't feel able to sort of share, um, share their passions and support their peers in that group. Um, and so I even know there was a particular, uh, seventh grader that sort of wrote a letter into the item in support of, of some criticism that she had gotten from the community and the fact that she felt that level of support, that she could stand up and sort of talk eloquently to what, um, the work that was going on was, was phenomenal. So I think it goes to, to what happens in our district and it goes on the heels of sort of the, the teacher appreciation and just, there's these little pinpricks of all the work that, that gets done and, uh, and you get to see the bright spots, um, in the results. And so, uh, lots of great things happening and I'll end with just, uh, get your tickets for the Wizard of Oz, because I think it's going to sell out, so. Um, or there might be some nosebleed seats still available, so I know I got my aisle seat, uh, so we're happy and looking forward to it.
Great, thank you. Yes, and I'd certainly echo, echo all of that, uh, all of that, what you said, especially about the, um, the ability that, um, that our, that our kids feel with a trusted environment and, and to be, to be able to be open and engaged and trusted, uh, to, to, to share and feel. So thank you for those comments, that was very, uh, very appropriate. Uh, just a couple of, just a couple of, uh, sort of general, uh, announcements, wrapping up a bit. Um, the, uh, Wakefield Education Foundation, WEF, has their STARS program, which is wrapping up this Thursday, uh, May 5. So if you, if anyone in the community or here in the committee would like to nominate a faculty manager, a teacher or a staff member, uh, to receive recognition under the STARS program, uh, those, uh, recognitions are being accepted through, um, this coming Thursday, May 5. Uh, and that's online, you go to the WEF webpage or Facebook page to make your nomination. Um, we have been invited, um, to a challenge, uh, notwithstanding the superintendent making, uh, putting us out there for a, um, for a softball game against the town council, uh, the Wakefield-Linfield Chamber of Commerce has invited us to enter, uh, a, a team or two, if we choose, in the Bowl-A-Thon. Uh, so the, uh, chamber is, uh, trying to, I guess, get some local businesses and local town boards to, uh, enter a healthy competition of sorts on, uh, Thursday, May 26. It's a Thursday evening, uh, here at the Wakefield Bowlerdrome, it's a bowling challenge. Uh, I'll put out information, I received an email from the executive director of the chamber, um, uh, and so I'll push, I'll push that out to everyone, so, uh, if we're available or want to be available or can be available for, uh, for bowling at the Wakefield Bowlerdrome, I can't promise that, uh, George Clooney or Ben Affleck may still be around, but, uh, I think it certainly might be a fun night if, uh, we're able to, uh, be able, able to, uh, do that, so.
At least we might not get as hurt as we were with softball.
That's true, you never know, you never know. We, we, well, maybe we could ease our way into it, see how we do at, at bowling and see if we can, uh.
To get injured in bowling, you probably.
If we blow that, then we're really in tough shape. But anyways, if we can support the Chamber of Commerce, um, they obviously are a tremendous, uh, you know, business partner in town and have been so supportive of the schools, especially the last couple of years, but not, not, uh, always as well. Um, and it was referenced, uh, earlier, uh, next week is Camp Bourndale, right? So we have.
And Nature's Classroom.
Yeah, so we have our, uh, we have our kids, many kids from the Galvin going on those trips, so we wish them, uh, Godspeed and, uh, good luck and, uh, health and safety and all that. And I would just, uh, like to add, um, a thank you to, uh, to, to the voters for reelection. I'm very appreciative of, of that, the confidence from the, the, from the community as well as confidence from my, my, my colleagues around the table. We'll, we'll have a good year, we'll have a, uh, as Mike said, we have no idea what's, uh, what's coming, so we'll roll our dice and move, and move our mice, but we'll be, um, we'll be open, we'll be, uh, together and cohesive as, as we can and make, uh, good decisions on behalf of, uh, kids and teaching and learning. Uh, I would also like to congratulate and, and thank for some outstanding work, uh, our, our outgoing chair and member, uh, Suzie Bear, who is off, off the committee now, uh, but certainly want to thank her, uh, for, uh, years of service and contributions to, uh, some very difficult times, uh, in the past year and really the past three years for her term. Uh, and also, um, thank and congratulate, uh, Amy Wall for her work in making this committee successful and, and bringing a unique and important, uh, uh, perspective to, to our work. Uh, so certainly both Suzie and Amy will be missed, but thank, thank both of them for their contributions, which I'm sure will continue on behalf of schools and, and Wakefield kids, so. Um, with that, um, in mind, or that, without any further ado, a motion to adjourn. Anybody would like to make that? Well, yes, it's, actually, it's Amy. No more, you're right. You were, you were a short timer in that, in that game.
I had a run on the nomination.
You did have a run, you ran the table. So, Amy?
Okay, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, May 3, 2022.
Second.
Uh, that made, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, meeting adjourned. Good night, all, and have a pleasant tomorrow.